You're filming.
Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting of the ERUNDO planning board to order. There's no way it's 7:24, is it?
Yes, it is.
It's 7:24 PM. We'll start with a roll call.
Marty gave.
John did.
Jamie Lowery.
Roger Moore.
Rich Gannon.
Tom McGinn.
And on the agenda tonight, we have the approval of the agenda. Approval of the minutes for April 2nd and April 9th. Proposed ordinance changes. Discussion of contract yard two in the Townhouse Corner District. A review of the proposed ordinance changes for the public hearing. And a review of the zoning map changes. And lastly, the planners' report.
I'll get the board on. I'll approve, like, motionally approve the agenda.
Motion being made and seconded.
You have to adjust it.
Okay. This is for what, Marty?
No sidewalk.
It wouldn't be on this agenda if it was being a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Which was not posted either.
Right, but that doesn't mean...
But it won't pertain to this agenda.
All I'm asking is, do we approve this agenda as written, this one here?
Okay. Any other discussion? Motion has been made and seconded to approve this agenda. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion's unanimous. Okay. Approval of the minutes for April 2nd.
It's wrong, maybe. Not good to me. So I moved that approval as written.
Let's, uh, let's, hold on. Let's, uh, do them straight by that.
April 2nd.
Well, then it's April 2nd.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, April 2nd, but there was, there was some confusion there.
But we need, we need a motion to... We've got a motion, we need a second so we can make the adjustments.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. John, you had some adjustments to make.
If I remember, I read them at home before I came. I can't remember where that was. Oh, right there, under digital signs. It wasn't clear to me. This is page two. Under digital signs. The first thing, that code enforcement officers should not be allowed to adjust brightness per field because there's too much ambiguity. That makes...
Yeah, I just read that. That didn't sound right either.
And then the other thing, uh, time and temp changes up to 10 square feet. I think that needs to be clarified, what that means. And that was, that was the... Those were two things that jumped out at me, but that first one, I think, needs to be reworded. And I don't exactly remember what, what that, what we did there, what that was supposed to be. Is it that the... I think it was that the code enforcement officers should not be allowed to measure brightness in the field. But I don't, I'm not certain there...
Yeah, I'm not sure what it was, but it is not being able to measure brightness makes no sense because it's based upon different charac... Because we had discussed nits, we had discussed, uh...
Right.
Candle.
Time of day. Where's also...
But remember that, that Tad said that because of the instrumentation, that it was difficult to do, or something like that? That's what I...
I do, I do. And, and...
So I guess we need to go back and look at, or, you know, listen to the minutes and see what they mean. And then also to clarify that second statement.
Right, because time and temp changed from something.
No, no. Time and temperature changes. The change in the time and temperature was gonna be 10 square feet. Not changing it up to 10 square feet, but the physical sign...
Right.
Was gonna be 10 square.
But what was it?
From what to what?
Yeah.
We're not, we're not changing it. What you did is you forced you... The time and temperature change. It's 2 o'clock, it's now 2:15, it's 2:30. That time change.
Right.
And that temperature change. Has nothing to do with changing it from one dimension to another.
But what does, what does a 10 square feet mean?
We never discussed that. We never discussed time and temperature and per square foot.
Yeah, we said...
Let's go back and check that, just to make sure that that's...
Yeah, we'll check it, but it does...
Yeah, I thought we had said that we were going to increase the size up to 10 square feet. The difference from what it was before.
The size was 10 square feet.
It was 10 square feet.
Right. What you did is you took fuel price signs and amalgamated with temperature and time, time and temperature sign.
Okay.
Made them both under the same standard. That's what you did. So two of it, they were two separate ones. You said, "Let's put them together."
Okay.
In one unit. I said, "Okay." So if you look at, uh, section 712, you'll see that change made in there where they're amalgamated.
Okay. Well, that's...
Okay. So then we will table those minutes until next week. And we will move on to April 9th.
Make, uh, one of the order, uh, pardon your vote, or withdraw my motion to table it.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if you want to do a vote and turn it down, pardon you?
No, we don't want to turn it down. Let's...
All right, so I'll just withdraw my, uh, my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. And then we'll, we'll table this until next week. On the April 9th.
I'm afraid I found a problem there.
We need to open it up to discussion.
Okay, you're willing to just...
So we, we need to have a, a motion and a second.
Well, I guess a motion to amend is what I would make.
I'll second.
Okay. What do we, what do we amend?
Okay, on page four. Under 9786. We spent a long time on that, and it still didn't come out right. Because it's got the drip edge in there.
It seems some of the verbiage from the, uh, the inadvertent...
Cut and paste.
Cut and paste. That was in, in the condition, the findings of fact sort of came over into this.
Yeah. That sentence there that says the installation of drip edge treatment will have no...
Right.
You know, that, that actually came out of and belongs in the champion auto one.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
However, let's see...
If you remember, we, there was the, the duplicate, uh, language in both of the findings of fact.
Uh, however, the, the net increase on previous surface will be zero. Pre-cupable may be maintained, but there is a treatment form involved here too that I, that should be in there.
Yeah.
So there's something missing as well. Which is...
Well, I think if Marie goes back and gets the new findings of fact, she'll be able to incorporate that in.
So that needs to be amended, and, uh, that's all I found, is going through it.
So on page eight, where the finding of fact is for that, it should be duplicated that that same verbiage belongs in both places?
No, it doesn't. It shouldn't be located.
No.
No, because that's, that's the...
That's champ.
The champion.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, then I think we need to, we, we don't want to amend that.
But there's a motion to amend, so that's one thing to amend, right? If anybody has anything else, then we...
Yeah.
The other, the other question I had, Marie, was at the very end of that, right before the bold print, on page five, middle of page five, right before the bold print. Um, I couldn't recall if they were annual tests. I thought that the discussion went to any test submitted to the DEP would also be submitted to the town.
Right. That was right. I clarified that. I did catch that, I forgot about it.
Point of interest.
So it's, it's, it's just a moment, Marty. So on an annual basis, just needs to be deleted there, and then, then it will be okay.
Kind of remember taking all, all, all tests must be submitted.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that may, you may be able to go back and refer to the condition of approval?
It said all, all tests.
And what else did you have?
Phil, Tom, you were at that meeting.
That's right.
So...
Okay. Good catch. I caught that too, I'll wait.
So, so I'm listed as attending, so...
Okay. Any other amendments required?
That's a good question. Anything else anyone has?
Yeah, Marie, I, I made all those changes to the findings of fact. So I'll mail those to you if you have to ask. You know, after the year, so... Fuck sent those to you.
Okay, so once, once you get those, those are good to go.
Yeah, it's good to go.
You post them up.
As soon as you approve those, then we can decide as to...
Okay.
So we still need to go down the motions.
A motion has been made and seconded to amend. The, the minutes and has been discussed. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries in.
Check in that.
Tom is standing for that one. Was it there?
I'm sorry.
Abstained, yeah.
He abstained.
I seconded that, yeah.
Okay. Proposed ordinance changes. Contract yard two in the Townhouse District. Remember, we had this great discussion last week? Was it only last week?
Yeah, it was.
That about, uh, having contracted storage yards two in the Townhouse Corner District. And I remember thinking that because we had stopped it at Clough, at John Clough Lane, we did not want it in Townhouse Corner District two, but we never really codified that with a vote. So I guess the discussion is, how does the rest of the board feel about it? Should we have, Marty?
Question. Do we have lots big enough for the size?
I think there might be...
I think there's maybe two or three, so if it is the case, it should, if it, it should be allowed to. If we have lots big enough in the district. If we didn't have lots big enough, then that would turn around automatically pre-clude contract storage yard two.
Okay, but you could make that same argument in residential districts, uh, that if there were lots big enough, we should allow them to be in those districts.
They are.
Uh, not yard two.
No, one is all.
Yard one is.
If I recall...
Did we bring the minutes with him?
At John Clough Lane, wasn't one of the, the residents there, um, wouldn't he be... Part of his property would be on or in the Townhouse Corners, right?
Correct.
And that's why we were playing with the idea of the contracted storage yard two, because he requested...
But he's allowed in the district where he's at if we broke it off.
And he would be continued, he would continue to be permitted in Townhouse Corners, right?
If we, but, that's correct. We broke it off at that point. The district that he falls into currently allows contracted yard twos.
Right.
But we had said no to yard two in the Townhouse Corner District. So it, it didn't really affect him. He wanted to be part of, uh, yard two because of, just, just because he happens to be on the wrong side of the street.
I, I kinda recall, I could be wrong, this was a while ago. I kinda recall that his property would be in the Townhouse Corner District, even though we cut it off at, at John Clough Lane. He was on the Townhouse Corner side of it.
No, he's on the other side.
I think they were both on the north side.
Okay.
If I remember right.
Right. He was, he was on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
Both those properties on the north side.
That's just love.
Yeah, love.
Right.
Yeah.
Both love.
Yeah.
Yeah, Richard loved her.
Yeah. Okay. So it doesn't affect at all?
No, because he, because he's still allowed in the zone that he's in.
Yeah, he's a non-conforming citizen, that's it.
Well, he'll become conforming when we get the new ordinance in.
Yes. If we do the contracted storage yard, he should, but he's doesn't have five, he does not have five acres. But remember that there's that provision that we built up. I know this is two years ago, you probably don't remember, but basically gave everybody who's existing in the, as a contractor yard right now, uh, the opportunity to apply to be, uh, basically, if you meet the minimum standards, which are less than the standards for a new contracted yard, and you register, remember this is a registration, if you go to contractor yard, explains it, they will be meet conforming. So...
He will be conforming.
My point is that...
Both the landscape business and the contractor will be conforming.
My point is that, and I could be misremembering this. Note, note that a political term there. In, in...
Yes, Hillary.
Selecting. I, I could be remembering this incorrectly, but I thought that contracted yard two was going to be allowed in that district that he will be in under the new zoning limits. I thought, I thought that that was on the, and because I, I thought that that was why we had stopped it at the John Clough Lane. Because he's going to be allowed in the new district anyway.
Remember that it was one of the reasons, personally, why it's, um, I, I voted to keep him out of the Townhouse Corner because he wouldn't be allowed by, by staying in the three or four, whatever he's in, so...
But there was also some upholders or other behind him. That's why they also wanted to be part of it, running off Clough Lane.
Yeah, there was one on the land on the back there.
Yes. One or two.
From state.
There was three. There was three altogether.
That's right. The minutes, if you want to refer to it, the minutes are on August 28th, and if we had a whiteboard and we have to put them up, say, "I'll kind of look at it," but it really does, does, uh, discuss that issue because we had a number of members of the public there, there were a number of residents there, Richard was there. Uh, I don't know who else was there. I think, yeah, Richard was the only one there, uh, for, for the contractors. And you folks, basically, um, you polled the board, the board polled on whether or not they weren't John Clough in the, in the Townhouse Corner District, and that, that failed. Where Townhouse, you decided that John Clough was gonna be boundary, and those, those properties would not be in the TCD District. And then the, the conversation, oh, it was Bob Tivino, that's right. Bob did show up, that's right. Sure, a little later. A little later, uh, we went over that again, and the issue came down to, went over restaurants, and decided on the maximum size for any building, if you recall.
Mm-hmm.
And then what it says is contractor storage yards in the TDC. Board began discussing whether both one and two yards would be appropriate to TCD. They did agree that if contractor yard one is, is appropriate, began discussions about contractor two, but not, did not make any decisions to the late hour of the evening. Discussion will be continued at a future meeting. And then we went to the gateway.
And this is a future meeting.
This is a future meeting.
So gentlemen, we need a motion, one way or the other, to either put it in or to leave it out.
Well, before you do that, maybe you want to look at it again, because it's in your packets, and contractor yard is, I believe you'll find that contractor yard is 829. It'll be the, one of the last of the packets that I have there. It's dated April 16th. This, it's dated today because I changed all the, I had to change all the numbers. But this date's back to 2012. Actually, this is the last one, this is 2013, after we had went over.
And I think that the issue that we have to look at, for this one in particular, uh, we don't need to look at this, for the existing contracted yard two, because there are none in that area. We need to decide whether or not we want to have new ones allowed.
That's really the issue.
Because there are none in the district right now, so we don't need to, to look at the performance standard four for existing yard two.
Yes, but, uh, let's say, for an example, Zoo, okay? He has the five acres or better, or if he wants to use it there, he's also... So that's why he could turn it on and be contractor, uh, two.
I agree.
That's what I'm saying for acres.
And, and I agree with you, Marty. What I'm saying is that if he wants to put one in there, we need to look at whether or not we want to allow new ones to go into the zone because there are...
That would be a new one.
Yes. But I'm saying that there are no existing yards, so we don't need to look at the standards for the existing yards. We need to look at the standards for the new yards.
Cool. Well, the fact is, there was no businesses allowed per se in that zone. Anyway, because when they turned and changed the comprehensive plan, there was, you weren't allowed to do anything in that zone. Because we didn't have that zone, because that was considered, uh, residential, when they changed everything to residential.
But luckily, last, last June, the conflict plan was approved, and they approved the Townhouse Corner District for small businesses, um, small-scale businesses. And that's why we're doing the, that's why we're doing the TCD District, and looking at this issue because now business is allowed in that, so... But it is, the conflict committee is really pretty insistent on being small-scale, and our maximum building size for new buildings is 5,000 square.
I think the, um, the conflict vision was, I, I think the, um, contracted yard two wasn't quite compatible with that, and what we're trying to accomplish down there, you could, um, use better uses for the property.
I agree there. I think the, uh, contracted twos are a little aggressive for what we're trying to do in the Townhouse Corner, given the, the size of the overwhelming, you know, majority of all the lots down there.
I think that's the way we were leaning when we were discussing this issue.
But question is, how many lots do we have that would meet the requirement of five acres?
But whether there's, there are lots there now or, or not, to me, is irrelevant because if I wanted to, if I were allowed to, I could buy two or three pieces of property and make a five-acre lot.
What I'm saying, not to create a lot. I'm saying a lot that is presently there. That's what I am using it. Not creating something that size.
I understand that. But the issue becomes, if we say that you're allowed to have a yard two, then what's to prevent somebody from going in there and buying up a, a number of lots? Other than the economics of the whole thing. But we're saying that you could then come in and you could buy three or four lots and make a five-acre lot and put a yard two in there. So the fact that, that there's not a lot big enough right now is irrelevant to the discussion of whether or not we should allow them to be in there.
The only clarification that I would use, if you have an existing lot.
So you're saying we should clarify that, that if...
If, if you do not want to, okay, per se. And so you aren't creating something for a five-acre lot. But if you have an existing lot that is already there, you should be allowed to do it if you want.
You can't discriminate between the two. You can't tell somebody later on that they can't buy five acres worth of land and not put a yard on it.
They're not permitted there now. So...
We, we don't know if they're not permitted there now or not. I mean, that's what we're talking about.
Right now, there aren't any that are currently existing in that area, so...
Because the past, there was nothing allowed there at all.
They weren't allowed there at all, so they're not there now.
Right.
So unless we allow them.
And there are other uses that, that we're not allowing in that district, I believe. Maybe not. But in a lot of districts, we have, um, uses that are not allowed, and this would be one of them in that area, whether they have land or not. Well, to keep, to keep us on track, I'd like to make a motion that we allow contracted yard ones in the Townhouse Corner District, but not contracted two.
Well, we already allow...
We already allow yard one.
So you have...
Okay, so, okay.
So you'd have to motion to exclude yard two.
I'd like to exclude. Well, we're not excluding it because it's not there now, right?
Well, not to, not to include.
Not to include.
Not to include, this is...
Okay. A motion has been made to not include contracted yard two in the permitted uses in the Townhouse Corner District. Is there a second?
Don't second that.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just make a statement. I don't think that, uh, contracted yard two is a high-impact use. So personally, I don't see a real big problem with it in Townhouse Corner.
Okay.
It's well-shielded and, and relatively quiet.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of excluding contracted yard two from the Townhouse Corner District? Those opposed? Motion carries four to two. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the list. Okay. Review of the proposed ordinance changes for public hearing. All of them.
Yeah, let's get that over in like in five minutes.
Well, a lot of these, we have already gone through and approved. In fact, we've gone through and approved all of these.
Several times.
Multiple times. We have approved all of them.
I guarantee if we read this tonight, we'll have to find areas that we're gonna disapprove of, we've already approved.
Yeah.
I was wondering why we approved it.
No, it's not that, but it's, you know, grammatical and spelling and all of that stuff. Nobody's had a chance to look at any of that.
I would say just move...
Cut and paste errors, you know, things like that.
Marty?
Just, just get it to a public hearing. And like I said, we started to try to go everything over again. Nothing's gonna happen tonight.
So I, I agree.
How about if, I don't need to make a motion, but we not get into, uh, the, the decision-making, it's only just grammatical issues that we, we review?
Well, I think it's a question of, of, you know, at this point, it, it's an issue of running spell check and then changing the dates to reflect the town meeting date.
Dates and numbers.
Because everything else...
Public hearing dates.
And, well, yeah, the public hearing, but, uh, most of the dates that are in here reference town meeting.
As to when it goes into...
As to when it goes into effect.
Subject to public hearing. Because when we have public hearing, there may be a conflict there. That's why I'm saying that.
Okay, yeah. I can understand that. But yeah, I, I mean, other than that, I, I don't see any reason for us to revisit.
How much, how much cross-checking have you done on this term? Because, you know, it's all been...
Well, I had to yank it out of the new format, so I haven't, I haven't cross-checked everything yet. I don't have it. Just trying to get it all. I had to renumber it all, put it back in the Frankenstein format, which is what I've been doing this week. But before we get to formatting, there are some substantive issues that we do need to discuss. Last week, you recall, back in, in March, and actually it was latter part of February, but I believe in March was the final day that you did that. You approved the ARD district as, as it currently is in your packets.
Yeah.
The issue is that in that ARD district, you did have digital signage. And then when you did your vote on which district should have digital signage, you excluded the ARD district from that. So I have a conflict in that one vote approves digital signage in the ARD district, and the, and the latest vote takes it out. And before I took all the digital signage out of the ARD district, I, I requested some clarification of which one you'd really want to do for some useless...
Yeah.
You know, some repetitive work.
That was a, it was, it was a close vote, was that what?
It was, it was tied.
Was that the one that was three to three?
It was three to three. The motion failed. The motion was made to include it in, uh, ARD, and it failed on a three-three vote.
Well, that means that it is now excluded unless we change our...
Right. Well, the only reason I bring it up, and I, believe me, I don't want to, uh, put you folks in a position where you have to reverse yourselves, but it seems like there was a, uh, the board approved the ARD district with the digital signage at that time when you did this. And then reversed yourself, and I guess I'm, you know...
Yeah, because we looked at digital signage as a separate penalty.
Right.
Within the district.
Well, and we were really looking at the, the ones, the, the districts that we have reviewed some time ago, and that sort of got lumped into the, the vote.
It did.
You know, we, I think that the bulk of the consideration was for Townhouse Corner and DB one and two, the Gateway District, things like that, before we had really gotten into the digital signage conversation.
So I guess we just, we need to look at it again. And the question is, do we want to allow digital signage in the ARD district?
Uh, that, that was last week?
That was last, yeah.
So I wasn't here, so I'm just curious, why, uh, it wouldn't be...
So I wasn't here, so I'm just curious why it wouldn't be allowed in this district only, but you're allowing it in the other.
It's not allowed in, it's not allowed in Townhouse Corner.
About the.
It was allowed in Gateway, it was allowed in DB one, DB two, the BI, ARD, it was a split, three, three. At first, I'll tell you now, I voted against it completely because I rethought where I stood on digital signage. And I'm afraid that it's going to, we're gonna end up looking like Saugus or some other area that we did not wanna look like. Because if we allow every business to have digital signs, we're gonna create a nightmare. We're gonna create something that I don't think we want it to have.
Yeah, I think I voted.
So I voted against it for that reason.
I did too. So I know you and I were guessing, well, who's the other vote? I agree with Bob, you know?
But it wouldn't be allowed, you're all right with being in the Gateway District?
I'm not, I'm not all right with it at all.
Well, the board.
The board is, yes, the board was. I was, I was not all right with it at all, which is why I voted against it on every issue.
I think it should be.
Right. Yeah, Marty does.
Well, we did.
And I respect his opinion. I understand why he would say yes. You know, I'm just afraid that it, of what it's gonna end up looking like.
I have a question. Yes and no, but not per se in the district, for just for clarification. Like we have the affinity bank.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. I had to think of where they were.
Tell me what are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know where they are?
Yeah.
But the fact is, and for example, where Saint Joseph was, which is now P something or other, okay, in benefit. They have a digital sign, very becoming, and everything else. Are we saying that they can't have one? That's where my question is.
What I'm saying.
That's not ARD.
No, no, I know.
He's giving the example of.
No, but Marty, honestly, if given the shot at it, I would say no, because I'm afraid of allowing too many signs of that type in the area, and that's going to create an issue. If you look at what used to be Saint Joe's in Benefit, they have one digital sign and you've got one across the street at TJ's Pizza, but there's nothing else around. After that, it's all residents until you get down to Hanaford. I just can't imagine what it would look like if every business that we allowed to have a digital sign set one up. Because you'd have a continuous line of digital signs, and I, to me, that's a problem.
I don't think you're gonna have that problem.
You may be right.
Because to the first, I mean, because just overall, not all businesses want digital signs.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, so I'm just saying is, if they want one, okay, fine. But I don't think you should say no.
And that's why we have seven people on the board to offset.
Right now, we're kinda arguing nothing because there's no motion on the floor to do anything. So if somebody wants to argue for changing it again, we ought to put a motion on the floor.
Thank you, John. You're absolutely correct.
I don't know if I'm the one to make the motion, but it seems like it's inconsistent. We're trying to be consistent with a lot of these issues.
And that's pretty much the reason that I voted to allow them was because we've, you know, we've got a business district. And that provides the consistency on the, you know, I'll say the major corridor business. You know, and we've got that ability, and I think we've, you know, if you're concerned about the risk, we run it, you know, everywhere. And I'm with these guys in that, you know, yeah, we'll allow it. I don't know if we'll have the, at least in the near future, the nature of the businesses and the demand to have them on that amount of lots that will be a plague to the community.
And you're right, we don't know, and I'm willing to admit that. I'm simply saying, and I'm glad that I don't have to make the decision by myself. I'm one person that's opposed to it. And if the rest of the board is for it, then that's fine. I can live with that.
I like to make the motion so that we reconsider that. We didn't make a motion, you, Tom was, did you make the motion, Tom?
No, no.
That's why. But if we're gonna reconsider, we have to make a motion. That's what I'm saying. I'm making the motion to reconsider.
Hang on, hang on. As a point of order, in order for us to reconsider this, the motion has to be made by somebody who voted in the affirmative and it has to be seconded by somebody who voted in the affirmative.
I'm in the affirmative.
Marty was in the affirmative. So the second also has.
Affirmative to.
To allow.
To allow it, because that's what the motion was.
It's the opposite. It's the opposite.
That's what I was thinking.
Robert's rule.
Yes, it's somebody who voted against it.
Don't worry, it's a tie.
Yeah, well, so, somebody from the other.
Yeah.
If you're gonna use Robert's rules.
Otherwise, what would prevent dissenting people to, from making a motion every week just to try and.
You have.
Not intentional, you know, not just.
How about if you don't reconsider it, you just make a motion without using the word reconsider?
Because that's the same thing, and that's not gonna happen. If we're gonna do it, we have to do it the right way.
I mean, and that's where I was for it, am for it. But, you know, we can't, we can't just keep going through and rehashing decision after decision after decision.
Well, I think if it was up to.
And that being said, I will not make the motion, nor will I second the motion. And that means that the motion stands the way it is. Because I think it's not here.
If it was up to you and Bob, there'd be no digital signs anywhere.
I think we should abolish all signs. Too many of those too.
Well, okay, John, you can do that thing.
Stand up. See what it looks like. It's horrible.
Why is light not room one?
Okay, so that's out of the way.
That's us.
Okay, so, do we need to provide direction to Ted?
He has to take it out.
We just take all that out.
He has to take it out of the ARD.
Quite frankly, I'm kinda surprised. I thought you would take it out of the, out of the Gateway District, which is your gateway entrance.
Well, that was a part, hey, don't give us any new ideas. Well, let's bring out what we're dealing with.
This one's a highway district.
I will take it out of ARD.
No signs.
Maybe the public will demand it back in.
And if the public wants it back in, and the public can put it back in, I think that's a great thing. Okay, reviewers, okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. When you say the public, if we have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, a town meeting, absolutely, yeah.
No, public hearing.
Yeah, next week.
It could be an outcry.
No, it won't be next week. There'll be another, another two weeks.
When you guys finalize this thing and I can.
We did originally say we're gonna have public hearings.
Right.
Well, that next week.
But you don't qualify to have it next week.
If we get through this tonight.
If you get through this tonight, fine, and nothing changed, nothing can change before the public hearing.
Correct, but last week we said we were setting a date for the twenty third.
All we're saying the changes.
But you haven't even finished half your stuff, if you recall. That's why we couldn't go to a public hearing.
But all we're saying the changes in here are going to be the dates, other than that change to the ARD district. The only other thing that has to be fixed in here are the dates.
Let's look at dates. Another minor.
Some of these dates go back to two thousand and twelve.
The other issue is you did not, when you did DB one for digital signage, you did not put a maximum size of signage for digital signage. Do you wanna keep it the way it is in the standard? Because remember, you did the digital signage pretty quickly. That was the end of the evening and you said, well, okay, this district, but remember, you have limitations on how big the sign can be. And the question is, is there a limitation you want in the DB one district, given what you were trying to achieve in terms of the character area? Or do you just wanna leave it that you're gonna have a fifty square foot sign that's digital? If you limit it in other places.
What did we, what did we propose it in the Gateway?
You did. You didn't. There wasn't. I have to put it in the Gateway, because it wasn't in the Gateway originally. I said you didn't want it in the Gateway, but now it's.
Do we have size restriction any place else for digital signage?
We do have size restrictions. And size restriction, you have, if you go to section seven twelve, go to section seven twelve. You knew it is five sixteen in the new ordinance, but now since we use the old format, five, seven, twelve. And if you go to the digital signage there, which you will find. It's nearly the end.
Seven, page seven.
Seven, twelve, thirteen. Yeah, it's all in seven, twelve, thirteen, which is all the digital signage, the four different types of digital signage. And we've got the three thousand nets and the one twenty five nets.
Well, I see, it's on page two, seven, twelve, thirteen, two, E.
Yeah.
Maximum size of digital electronic message, or message sign. I think that's the same thing.
Yeah, it's twenty five square feet.
Twenty five square feet.
And the other one in the digital graphic.
Thirty square feet.
Is thirty square feet.
So wouldn't that be across town?
That would be unless you have it differently in different districts. Remember, you have zoning, different standards in different districts because you're trying to achieve different.
So if it's not listed. If it's not listed, by default, it's what's in here would be the maximum.
Unless you wanna make it smaller or bigger than DB one. And the DB two, we go to DB two, we look at the maximum size, go to the chart, that's eight twenty two, three. Actually, it's not three, I'm sorry. Eight twenty, you're gonna find it's on page five.
Fire truck is down.
Yeah, I don't believe we ever have a maximum on this one, I don't think. Oh, yeah, we have twenty square feet.
Digital graphic display, twenty feet.
Twenty feet. It's twenty feet for both in the DB two. So it's bigger. The DB two, it's smaller than the maximum size, than the maximum size in the general standards.
And this is the only place that we've actually defined the size, because we haven't said it in any of the other districts.
Yeah, this was the, well, because this was the only one we had originally, was, you only had it in the DB two district. You were finished with DB one and two, and you had no digital signs in the DB one, so that's why there's no size there. And the DB two, you went to twenty square feet. And then when we were coming up with the size, you raised it to thirty for a graphic sign. So, yeah, it doesn't jive there. And, you know, the question is, in this district, it probably, probably should be thirty square feet. The question is, do you want it smaller in the DB one district considering the size of the signs in the DB one district?
Where, let's put it this way. What we're supposed to have is our business district is Route one. It's always been Route one. You wanna make signs smaller in Route one anyway. So you've gotta turn out, be able to put a bigger sign in something you can't see off the road, then turn out where you have supposed to be our pride and joy, Route one business district.
I'm not sure how the rest of you feel, but I would take that digital graphics display sign section in the DB two district out completely because we've addressed it in the digital signs. Let them have their thirty feet. If that's what we're gonna allow everywhere else, and we haven't disallowed it anywhere else, we haven't reduced size. The only place we've reduced the size is here. So if we're going, if we're going, unless we're gonna go through each one of the districts and set standards for it, then we should take it out of the DB two district. And that, that being said, there's also an issue with the time and temperature sign. Time and temp, not to exceed fifteen square feet. Really? We said ten.
Remember, gentlemen, you did this two years ago.
Yes.
You did digital signage a month ago.
But yeah, I would, I would think that we should take, we should take it out of here, the digital graphics sign, out of here and rely on the general standard for the entire town, and we should do the same thing with the time and temperature sign.
Do you need a motion on that? If you wanna, I will, I will throw it out there. So make the motion that we pull out eight twenty two, point five, E and F completely. I think that would do it.
I think so.
Through the chair.
Yes, how about if we not pull it out? Just make sure that the sizes are the same consistently between the standard. Only because, remember, one of the things of having these separate sections is so it's, you don't have to go flip-flopping through the book. You're looking at one, one chapter to find out everything you need to do to develop in that district. That's why we doing this. We're drawing the line, though. There's a lot more to signs in here that isn't included in each one.
Well, because there's a lot of exempt signs, there are a lot of special signs in certain districts. Remember, those are general performance standards. Those are the general performance standards. And we put those in there, and then we started, then when we were considering, that's when we started putting limitations on it. And before, it was gonna be just a general standard, and then you were gonna put different sizes in the different districts.
So you, from point of interest, you made a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. So for discussion, are you suggesting, Ted, that we change all the numbers here to match the recent ones that we came up with?
Yeah, either that or I put it in the table, so it's easy to find out how many.
Let's make it simple. Let's not make it.
Is it worth, is it worth doing, though? I'm afraid at this late stage, we have to then have to do it to every district? Why only have that done in this district only?
Because there'll be post signs in every district that way too. If you do it.
Well, I guess it's a format issue.
Kind of abandoning the original concept that we're trying to do here, but if you want to.
I go, anyway, it's a format issue. For me, it's like, let's keep it consistent.
Simple.
If it's in one, maybe it should be in all of them. Or if it's not in all of them, don't put it in any of them. So which way do we go?
Well, if that's the case, look what you just did with one eleven.
Same thing, to consistency or that seems a little odd, but on this one, it's the only one that has specific.
No, yeah, because this is the only one we had originally.
Now, now we allowing it in three others. So should we put those in the three others as well?
Well, I would, I would add, yeah, I would put the size of the digital sign in the three others, yeah.
See, I would, I would tend to.
Well, you don't wanna get, if you wanna abandon the idea of having, this is all you need to do to be able to pull a permit in this particular district. You wanna abandon that concept, so you have to flip back to the design, general performance standards, then we could do that.
That's like a Japanese operations manual. One page, go back to the next page, go back to the next page. I think it should be, go to one place and find what you're looking for, don't have to go back and forth.
But, you know, look, I'll do it, you know, just to get it through, if you wanna do it that way, I'll yank these out and we'll, and we'll see how it works and change it later.
We need to have enough in there for signage to dictate or to elaborate on what is allowed, what type of signs are allowed.
Yeah, and see, we have more detail in individual districts of what you're gonna do with various post signs, window signs and so forth than we do in the performance standards.
His motion, his motion was not to pull out signs. His motion was to pull digital signs, just that one specific section.
It's two sections.
Well, two E.
Do, what numbers were there? F and whatever?
It was two E and two F, because the time.
What about two D?
Two D, no, two D wasn't an issue.
I thought the square footage was an issue. Okay.
No, yeah, you may be right. I hadn't seen the square footage issue one hour, because I saw it down below.
Do we have anything that says changeable copy sign in this house? Let's not use that term recently. Yeah, that's gonna be, that has to change out, because we changed that term. Yeah, I just have to do a search, word search.
Well, because we changed.
You wanna pull it?
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if I should.
Oh, yeah.
I like to hear from anybody else. What should we do? Should we add to others or?
Let's put it this way. Digital sign was brought up to us to allow. Now, it seems like right now, it's becoming more and more of a cluster and turning.
Getting blocked down.
You know, everybody wants to run it to become of the current ages. because it turned, we couldn't have it as clarification, because it did not have an internal lit bulb, okay? Well, let's make it simple, you think, you know, let's not have all these restrictions. If you can afford the digital sign, let them have it. A sign cost enough in the first place.
I think you're arguing for making it consistent everywhere.
No, I'm just saying, if you wanted to have a digital sign, let them have a digital sign.
Right, without additional restrictions in one district, from one district to another.
Right.
You want it consistent in the districts, is that right? So let's just make it, let me make it consistent.
You got, you got, you got comment?
That one, that one we're talking about.
Hang on, we all can't talk at once.
So I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, um, as long as you make it consistent, that's really what I'm looking for. As far as why it's here and not in other districts, I don't care, I let that go, that's another issue. But some of these, these, um, numbers are different than every place else, so make the numbers.
And they, they should be the same as, as everywhere.
And let me point out the nits as well, five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, they have to change, too, yeah.
Okay. Kind of thing I was working on.
Yeah, Jerry.
So that works, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, I need a little time to do this, guys, I mean, it's good for.
Hang, hang on for a second.
It seems like the argument on size of signs is, you beat your head against a tree all night, why wouldn't you make it all?
We just did.
Thirty square feet. I would say one, I don't know if you guys have addressed it in another ordinance, but is there anything on illumination, like hours of illumination on these digital signs? There is, so they have to be off at a specific time, they can on.
Not off, but dimmed down. You know, you can leave them on, but you have to dim them down.
And that changes in districts, or that's the same all the way?
Same everywhere.
It's going to be the same everywhere.
I mean, the, the owner could turn the, the digs at all.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm trying to think, the, the few complaints I've heard on the LED digital signs are illumination in residential districts, where the homeowners see the light constantly and.
Yeah, that'd be annoying.
The brightness of the sign late at night, I mean, that would be one point you might want to bring up in the specific district, where it conflicts with residential houses and businesses, you know, one maybe not so much.
We do have limits to how far that light can spill over to the outside of the property line, but it's still, it's hard to control that.
That's, that's all part of the discussion we've had about digital signs over the past month, you know, how do you control them, how do you measure them? Because they don't even get measured the same way that, uh, incandescent light gets measured, or from a lot of the other signs. So we've had a great deal of discussion about that, and we've put in what we think are reasonable restrictions to allow people to, uh, turn them down a little bit, to dim them down.
Actually, quite a bit.
Yeah, they're dimmed down significantly from what they're gonna have during the daytime, there's no question.
From what, three thousand to?
Twenty-five.
Was it twenty-five or thirty-three or something?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five, right, twenty-five.
Okay. So, yeah, we've, we've made some significant impact, uh, from that point of view.
It will always be, but you're, you're right, I will agree, the, the problem is, we've got a lot of mixed-use districts, and we're always going, we will run into some conflicts between residences and businesses, because these are not solid business districts. These are mixed-use districts with residences, and you remember what the town planer made us go through, to ensure residences can continue to, to exist there. But we also have a provision in there, it's pretty loose, that, you know, if there's a problem with it, we can in fact, um, can in fact go back and, and have the owner turn it back, turn it back into the Alma one twenty-five nits. This is new, great new world, you know, digital signs we know are too bright, and this board actually reduced it down significantly from what the standard is in other towns where they have problems, so that is one good thing. But there's also an escape clause in there for the code enforcement officer to, to be able to bring action if, if, if it's a nuisance that we bring in force.
So, what I would suggest right now is that we, we don't have any major, or actually, any variation between what's in this signage, sec- seven, twelve.
Yep.
Versus what's in the performance standards for the districts. I think it's gonna create a lot of confusion, and, you know, furthermore, who, if we don't, if it's not specifically spelled out, who's gonna know which, which part of the ordinance takes precedence over the other? Because I'm looking at this, and, and to Jason's point, in the nighttime nits in the DB two, eight two, eight twenty-two point five says from five thousand down to five hundred, but if I'm a neighbor there, and I don't like somebody's sign, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring this to your office and say, this says one twenty-five.
Three thousand and one twenty-five.
Right.
Right. Well, it also says in the sign ordinance that unless otherwise specified in the district.
But I think that was the intent of, of what Tom was saying, is that we need to make it consistent throughout all of the districts, and I think the standard that we should use is what's the general standard of signs, and just apply that across the line. We do allow them to come in and say, that's not enough, I want to increase it. That is part of the sign ordinance, so if they were to come and say, well, I don't think it's sufficient, they could come and make the argument that they should have a bigger sign, or a brighter sign, or however they want to go. So we've allowed for that, we've also allowed for the issue of what happens if it's too bright, and codes enforcement officer has to get involved. So I, I think.
I would agree with that.
I'm a big fan of having it standardized across everything, and I don't even want the signs, but I'd still rather have a standard.
As the districts evolve, having, having them specifically in the different, different districts, we can tweak things.
Yep.
But I would say for right now, let's not overcomplicate things, we've got enough to do with that.
Yep.
So, does, does that need a, a motion that, that you'll be, I guess it's a change to what we have, or you're.
It is a change, so we need to make.
All right, so let me, let me change my motion to, to allow, um, Ted to change all the values to match what's in the, the lighting, uh, digital lighting.
Section seven, twelve.
Section, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So everything will be consistent, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so a motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to have the town planner change all of the digital sign.
All references to all digital signs.
All references to all digital signs to match what is in seven, twelve, the di- the digital sign section.
Great.
Assuming that I had that number correctly.
That's correct. So we're not gonna drop it, we're just gonna make sure.
We're gonna make sure that it stays.
Consistent.
Seven, seven point twelve point thirteen.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Well, is there?
Yes, yeah, Jamie, Jamie said that.
Okay.
All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Is there anything else?
Yes.
In, in, in the, uh, ordinances that we're looking at, Marty?
No.
Okay. Is there anything in the ordinances with the changes for, for town meeting, or, or for public hearing?
That's two, two questions on that.
Okay.
Right. On public hearing.
On public.
When are we having it, and the second thing is, when are we gonna have a, a, another site law?
Well, the.
I mean, this, you said others, that's why I'm throwing it.
Well, I clarified it to be in relation to this, because this is the section that we're working on.
Okay.
So, for, from the, uh, ordinances for the public hearing, are there anything else that we need to look?
Yeah, one thing, this, this is on the townhouse corner, the, um, permitted uses, yeah, eight twenty-three. Permitted use number seventeen, it, it, in print, is planning board to determine size area.
That's right, and that is specific to when they come in for the, with the, with an application.
And what's that based on, though? Where each, each one, we decide if we like them, and.
I don't really wanna.
Or just come up with a number.
Some kind of.
Where are you?
Uh, it's eight twenty-three.
I thought we had performance standard.
And permitted uses number seventeen, restaurants.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, planning board needs to come out.
Yeah, because we do have standards, so maybe that should just be pulled out.
Yeah, that, that just needs to be stripped.
It just needs to be taken out, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Good pick up.
Then, looking at the back of that, too, we've got a bunch of definitions.
Yep.
Will they come out?
Yeah, the definitions will come out.
Or they'll be in the regular?
Well, they'll be in the definition section.
They'll be in the definite, there already are in the definition. I keep them in here just because there was a lot of discussion about what these various things were. They'll come out of the, the, uh, the final.
Makes sense.
Okay.
But I wanted to make sure that it was in there, because the last time, we had a lot of debate over what these various definitions are.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Well, not having had a chance to read through all of it, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Well.
Be like Joe Public, read it later.
Oh, like the, the healthcare app.
Right. Gotta pass it before you know it's up.
Yeah, Harry Reid.
Hey, yeah, I.
So I gotta put digital signage in the DB, the BI, and I now I have a standardized for digital signage, for all the digital signage. Same thing with the GWD district, I gotta put digital sign.
Yep, okay.
So.
So consistent on that.
What about all those dates, are we gonna?
Days between the.
We'll discuss that.
So you, you just make them all the same date?
Yeah, and they'll be the date of the town meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sometime in June. I think, like, the thirteenth or the fifteenth, is it?
It's the eleven.
The eleven?
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
It's right around the corner.
So, the rest, we're just gonna accept as is.
We're gonna, we're gonna go to public hearing.
Well, you've gone over every single one of these things.
Yeah.
We have.
There's nothing.
We, we don't wanna, we don't wanna open them up again.
No, we're not, we're not gonna open them up.
We need them to, that, not put it on all.
Sure did, okay, great.
But you've cleared up what were discrepancies that I needed to know before I proceeded.
Well, that's not bad.
Zoning map changes.
Yeah, zoning map changes, I'm gonna have to do my hand, because I'm.
That's what the make an eraser for.
Yep.
Uh, we already went over the ones we're gonna do with the BI, uh, I guess my, my last question on that is, um, Bud LaGro, I haven't gotten anything back from them. Um, what I was gonna propose to do was to make that zoning change just for the area that he showed on that map, and that was it.
Because he's the only one who brought it forward.
But if you remember, we had said, we needed to have, we, we had asked to have a, a clearer delineation on that map.
From Al Frick.
From Al Frick, and we have not gotten his back.
No.
And to me, that's a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
I think if, if, if we're not, he's, Al Frick is Bud's agent, he should have gotten us the information, he was asked for it quite a long time ago, and he has not provided to, provided it to us. And I think, in order for us to remain consistent, in the past, when we have asked for information and not gotten it, we have tabled the item, and I think we need to table this one. Until we get the information that, that we requested.
Could, could we just have a friendly reminder, because I'm, I'm afraid we might be getting into a reputation where slamming doors are based on.
But we're not slamming doors, they're not, we're asking for information.
It's the impression, it's those impression that we're, we're, um, getting too technical, even though we're not. You know, I think there's, there's other applicants out there that, that have, um, been bringing up things in the public, saying we're denying.
Yeah, because he's, Bud has tried for, now, per se, two years, okay? But if we have a friendly reminder, if it's clarified, so it could be still sent to town meeting.
Not enough time.
That's, that's the issue.
There's not enough time. But here's what I propose, you know, remember, this is something Jim and I did in the field, we're in concurrence with the, with the, with the, uh, you know, I've gone over every single one of these things, and I've done my own measurements out there, and I'm in concurrence with Al on this. What you wanted was, you wanted a more complete, uh, mapping of his property, and, um, and what I proposed to do is create a salient, and basically to, to use what has been mapped, and change only what's been mapped, and leave the rest of it in there. Because it's the same thing going over on DuBois Lane, too, because DuBois Lane, some of that, I don't think it is, is resource protection either, but that has not been assessed, and.
Hasn't been brought up to us.
Well, it hasn't been brought up to us, and, uh, and given what the town attorney says in that, you know, we have to take this to, to, uh, to town meeting, where she advises it, even though this is a field of justice, not by the planner, or the code enforcement officer, by our own laws, but this is just to cover the bases, I think under the circumstances, I don't think we should, this is staff's opinion. I don't think we should penalize him, because he hasn't done all the mapping we would like him to do. I'll just put in the salient that's there, and the rest of this area will just embell up back to where it is right now. So only change the map where we've got data that confirms that.
Okay, because we did approve of the change.
Yeah, you did approve of the change. What you wanted was, you wanted more of the westerly, uh, extents of that wetland, because it's an extensive piece of wetland. But, and actually, I can't, I can't do it based on that map, but you wanted the soil scientist.
Is it, is this map, this map indic- that we have indicates houses that do not exist.
That, that's a proposal that he's got, yeah, that's why he did this, is because he basically wants to, uh.
Bring it off for his family.
Wants to bring it off and do a family division, he's gonna have to come to you folks anyways, because he's got more than, uh, seven houses on that, on that property. He's gonna have to come in for full-blown subdivision, or on that, even though it's a family division, under private one, he's gotta pay that, he knows this.
And, and I understand that, here, here's my, my cons- I have two concerns with this. The first of which is that we've requested information that we have not been given. If we don't get the information, does it not set precedent for other people to ignore us and say, well, we don't have to give them what they asked for, and we're still gonna get what we want? The second one is that if we accept this, these maps with houses on them that do not exist, we're approving something that we know is incorrect. There are houses, they don't exist, how can we say, yes, this map is a valid map? Those are the two issues I have.
Good points. Well, I.
And I don't, I don't want to punish, but.
I don't think we're approving the map, I think Ted is, is proposing to draw a map based on this map, if I correct my information.
That's right. I don't need Al on this, I can, I can make my own interpretations of it, I have the same qualifications.
And there's enough, there's enough on this map to draw a valid rezoning of that particular.
I think to a point, to a point, and then.
Right, and then the rest of it is.
What I would say is, from about here over, sort of, sort of, gets fuzzy.
That's what we have to clarify.
Because we don't, you know, we, we needed that clarification.
It's very fuzzy from here on over, in fact, this boundary, I think, continues.
Right, well, that was the point.
See that shrub swamp right there?
Exactly, so, so the wetland, just.
I disagree with that.
This pink line sort of comes on up this way.
So you put in the points that you know, and you can.
So that's where I would say.
Field observation.
Somewhere, right about where that crook.
So, so the, at least it's, it's, it's being done.
Because if, if this wetland comes up this way.
It does.
Two fifty off of that is gonna make this line.
Oh, yeah.
Come on around, you know, that's what it's gonna be.
I feel most comfortable with this area. And I can make the map, I mean, the map, I understand, so, but, you know, the map is a two thousand scale map, it's going, you know, this line changes two pin widths on that map. Well, I want that, but it's, it's a very, very small change on that map.
Right.
Okay.
So we have the information needed on that.
Right, this point here, this arc is all dependent, right there, I think that's.
Then they do it, I think for.
Clarification.
Clarification, and for clarity's purposes, we should probably vote as to whether or not we want the town planner to prepare the map, that we need to have for the, for, uh, public hearing and to go to town meeting, because we don't have what we need.
Yeah, that's one of the things, I don't, that's why I said I'm gonna hand do this map. I don't have to have the final digital map until ten days, fifteen days after town meeting. So, you know, I.
And if we don't get it, then it's not.
No avoid. Well, then it's no avoid.
That's what I'm saying.
What I'm, what I'm going to do on this is, I'm gonna hand draw it for these purposes, and then I already got a contact with, with a GIS guy who's gonna plot it with a better, better certainty than I, I will, um, on the, on the, the base zoning map, just like he's going to redefine that, the, uh. The, uh, the DB one and the BI district, remember, which we hand drew last year. Actually, after, after the meeting, I think we did that in what, uh, July. We went over the, uh, the BI and the, all those changes on the boundaries.
For Frick? Yeah, but that was.
So I.
That's a boundary change and that's a map change.
I'll make that motion that we authorize the planner to base the map on available data.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to allow the town planner to prepare a map based on available data. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carries and answers.
Third thing, descriptions.
Question, real quick, thinking about zoning, before we get off of zoning, first off, we talked about Bud. How about, you know, we talked with the BI district, are we gonna have a, a proposed zoning boundary map for those districts? When we go to public hearing?
We have to.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, you remember, you guys have already approved the boundaries in the districts. Okay, and in fact, the Frick's map was one of the first boundaries you have approved. Okay? So that's ready, that would be going. I'm gonna just put it all on one map as close as possible. I might even do it as large scale like we did during our public hearing. Remember, I blew up the scale, so it was very clear when those lines were. Um, also, I will have to change the descriptions for all of these, because the problem last time was the descriptions didn't match. What they're going to say is they're not gonna be anything like they were, uh, currently in the ordinance. It'd be like, I think I showed you guys before, it's very simple what it's gonna say, it's as shown on the map. Because if Leah's saying, it doesn't matter what descriptions we put down, and the map prevails, then what's the point of going through, you know, two pages of description if the map prevails?
Yes, but the only point is.
I love to argue that. I, I know, John, but I'm, you know, I, I, we paid a lot of money, so I'm gonna follow her on this one, okay? I don't think we got much choice.
It is, it doesn't, it doesn't follow the same logic with our problem boundaries.
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is if, by description or not description. Frick's was correct by description, and then they turn around and say, well, the map was right because, but the description was wrong.
Yeah, how can that be? That was the issue of the, 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 the graphic map prevails.
Right.
That's what the court has said, that's what the law court has said. Actually, it's a superior court. In, surely in zoning, it's a superior court, but in terms of zoning, it's a law court decision that says the map prevails. And so, you know, I wanna argue as much as you do, but I can't.
Okay, so we have the zoning maps. Are we set for town meeting? Are we set for town meeting for public hearing?
Um, I have to get all the, make these changes before I, I can probably advertise, but I, when that advertisement hits, I have to have everything ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, so I have to have, and I have to advertise for thirteen days prior to, and seven days. Now, I know our ordinance says otherwise. Our ordinance says I only need seven days. State says I need thirteen days.
So what date were you shooting for?
Three weeks from now? Yeah, we're gonna have to, well, figure that it's gonna take.
That would be May seventh.
Yep.
As opposed to April thirtieth.
Public hearing, you mean?
Yeah, for a public hearing.
It's not a regular meeting, so I'm gonna have to go and get, uh, get the gym, I think. Cause I still think the, uh, the Historic Society's got it locked up for that day.
I think we're gonna need the gym anyway.
Think so?
Sure, we're looking at the. We're looking at the. Every show we ask.
Before it was very.
Yeah, before it was DB one, DB two, and we jammed out the library, and now we're looking at.
Well, there was. No, we just had Town House Quarter there, and then the library was jammed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the, yeah, gym will be open towards the end of the year, school year, if I have kids.
One thing I also wanted to bring up also is the last time we had that landscaping session, section in there, which we had not gone over. Do you wanna reintroduce that, or you wanna bring it back at a later date?
Bring it back at a later date?
At a later date, yes.
Absolutely.
Good, okay.
So if we go May seventh, when's the next, when's the viable option for the, for a follow-up public hearing?
There isn't.
Here is, here is the thing that I'm looking at.
Because the Floodman has to set the warrant seven days prior to the meeting, correct? And you're not having a meeting on Memorial Day, to my knowledge. The only other thing you could do is.
They, they, we've had it the day before Memorial Day.
Well, yes, if the Floodman wanted to have a special meeting just to sign a renewed warrant, what you could do is, I'd have to advertise again the eleventh. And, you know, I wouldn't be.
We had to do it for Branch Brook.
What?
We had to do it for Branch Brook years ago.
Well, I've got, well, I, I don't know about that zoning here. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just following state law on the, on the, on the, uh, notification period. I've got one, two, three, four, um, days. I could do it on the twelfth, which would put us on the twenty-sixth to have the public hearing. And maybe the Selectmen could do it on the twenty-seventh, which gives them more than seven days, if they want to. If they want to.
Let's put it this way.
Last time, actually, there's been one time when we, we got it down to the wire, where they all came in individually and signed the warrant. I don't know if you guys wanna do that again this time.
Well, looking to crystal ball.
So we're looking at May seventh and May twenty-first?
No, maybe the twenty-first.
Well, I was just thinking that was fourteen days later.
Yeah, but you keep forgetting the advertising. I have to have three days advertising, three days lead time to the advertising. That's my problem.
But we had discussed last week.
Yeah.
About advertising, two consecutive meetings. Advertise the meeting and then advertise the second meeting. We can, if we don't need the second meeting, we can always cancel the, the, the second public meeting. But we could advertise both of them at the same time, so that we would have it within that, that fourteen, thirteen day period of time. Personally, I'd rather say seven days, cause that's what our ordinance does.
That was what I was under the impression we were looking to do.
What, do seven days?
No, do two sep- do the two notices at the same time.
Well, it's very expensive to do, guys, cause I've got published maps there too.
But we're gonna have to do two public hearings, and we're gonna have to publish it anyway. We have to have a public hearing to present everything, then we have to have a meeting to review everything and decide whether or not we're going to change anything. And then go back to, to another public hearing. Our, the only other option we have is to have a, a public hearing and then say, we're not changing anything, and we're gonna take it to town meeting.
And that's what happened last time with Town House Quarter.
Last, last time, year, when we got faced with a single public meeting, we pulled the whole thing back and said, no, that's it.
That's it.
That's right.
And if you're Paul, you didn't change very much from that meeting.
And we don't wanna do that again. I'll tell you right now, the idea of our not having anything to take to town meeting is abhorrent. We have got to bring something to, to the town meeting that, I don't wanna look like we sit around all day and do nothing.
So you're, so you're.
We've got three years' worth of work here.
So you're advocating if we go to public hearing and, and the, the public wants twenty changes to this?
At the next meeting, we look at it and determine whether or not we agree that those changes need to be made. If we, if we do not make any changes, then we don't have to have the second public hearing. But if we do have some changes, then we need.
No, you actually do it. If you advertise, you gotta have it.
Okay, then we go back and we say, we made no changes.
I still don't think that's a bad idea.
I don't think it's a bad idea. Okay, because we've, if, if, if we don't, gentlemen, let me put it to you this way. If we look at it and say, we're not gonna have that second public hearing, then whatever we take to the first public hearing is what we're taking to town meeting.
Sure, very much what you.
You know, and is that fair to, to have, why, the, the people are gonna come out and have, and give us their thoughts on it? And for us to say, we can't reconsider it because we don't have any time to have a public hearing? Well, you know, let's, let's post a second public hearing, so that if, if we make any changes, we can take those changes. And everything else, we can say, we've reviewed it, we've looked at it, we're gonna take it to public hearing the way it is, or to town meeting the way it is. And in these areas, we've looked at it and we've said, yes, there are some changes that we can make, we heard what you had to say, we made those changes, this is what it is. This is what we're gonna take to, to town meeting, cause there's no more time to change anything. That's, those are my thoughts on it.
So, it, it looks, it sounds to me like we'll need at least six weeks to have, three weeks for the, for the next public hearing. Another week to, for us to bash it over, and then another week or two after that for the second public hearing.
Right, we could have the second public hearing on the twenty-first.
The twenty-first of May, and, and when's it have to get to the Selectmen?
The following, the following week.
So you're saying that on, on the fourteenth is when we would do any changes?
We're gonna have to the fourteenth.
No, you're gonna have a special meeting. You don't have till the fourteenth. Okay? Okay, because I, I know.
We'd have to have a.
I can't perform that many miracles. Because I have got to make the change before, before you advertise this public hearing. Right, thirteen days before you advertise this hearing. I, when anybody walks into that, into the town clerk's office, she's gotta have unaltered, unchanged, what will be presented at that meeting.
So even if we make all the changes, we're all done in that one night, you still need to have time to, to fix it, to edit it all?
I have to fix it, yeah, and it has to be ready by the time that publication occurs, yeah.
Which would be the next day, really. Need thirteen days.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was twenty-four hours.
Yeah, who, what are you gonna do that night? You got nothing else to do.
Well, first thing you guys are gonna have to do is make this request, because you're already over your, your advertising budgets. You're gonna have to make this request to your.
We're over our, what budget do we have?
You have a budget or not?
We, we have to do the advertising, okay?
Yeah.
What have, what have we advertised?
Just want you to, I, I will notify the town manager, okay?
I mean, I, I mean, I agree, if we don't schedule in a second public hearing, essentially, what we finish up tonight is going in, in June.
Yeah, the public hearing will just be a.
A formality.
Formality, right.
Right, and I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
I don't like that.
No, I don't like that either. We don't have any time, we won't have any time, if the public wants changes.
Let's not go down that road.
Saying we don't have time to do the changes.
Well, on, on the product side, we've had so much input all, all along that.
That, we've had public hearings and sections. We've had public hearings on DB one and DB two. We actually have invited verbally, I called people up to come to meetings, which we had at, at the demand and the request of the company. Before we finished up with DB two, we had to have a discussion with every single property owner in the backlands. And some of them changed their minds, you know, but, I mean, the simple fact was, we've done a, a lot more diligence with the public as we went. We just didn't have a formal public hearing for the finished product as we went. But we've, we've had a lot of input.
Yeah, it's gonna be something that, that might come to our attention, but.
Yeah. Okay, so if I, we schedule for the seventh. And it advertises on the twelfth. So if it advertises on the twelfth, that would mean that you would have to have your hearing the twenty-sixth, the day after Memorial Day. You'd have to make a decision that night if you made any changes.
Look at something here.
And the Selectmen, by their good graces, would come in one at a time or whatever, on the twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth. They've got seven days prior to the meeting, so it is, there's almost two weeks before.
They have seven days prior to the June eleventh meeting?
It, yeah, if they, well, actually, actually, it goes to the, the first, the first event.
So the June tenth?
I think it goes to the tenth.
Okay.
So, so I need, I need to clarify something on dates. Cause I've been focused on having Wednesday meetings, and I don't think we need to. If we have a meeting, this, this is, this is ready to go. Let's assume that, that Tad gets all of the date changes done tomorrow, and this is ready to go to, to town.
I got other things I gotta do.
Well, okay, so, but even if we do it on Monday, Monday the twentieth, and we say thirteen days later. We could, we could theoretically have a, a meeting on May fourth, which is, which, which is fourteen days later. And we only need a thirteen day limit. But you add three days to everything you do, because the paper needs to set this up.
Just cause he submits it, doesn't mean that the, the notice has been posted.
Then I'd say we ignore the state law and we do seven days, which is what our ordinance says. That's our ordinance.
Right.
And I'm perfectly willing to argue with the state about whether or not it's thirteen days.
Oh, good.
That's ridiculous.
So we're gonna do all that work and lose on a technicality.
I support that.
Losing on the technicality.
No. Tell them the state, we're gonna stick it.
I think we all would like that. We also know that any judge, when they're alive, and any challenge to anything you guys do, a judge would just love us to make a procedural error. He doesn't have to do substantive thinking. He just says, ah, you screwed up, take it back. That's one. And you're right, I mean, you wanna follow that, that seven day?
I know, Lee softly personally, she'll take care of it.
But that's, that's the way all the other towns do this, thirteen days posted and seven days. See, I advertise twice.
Well, at least most town attorney happens to have the last bit of Charlie. So let's just do it.
Let's just do it, we don't have a choice.
So, so what are we doing? Let's get this. Seventh, twenty-sixth. And then the twenty-sixth.
So that's a Monday?
That's Tuesday.
So we're looking at May seventh?
Twenty-fifth?
We're looking at May seventh, which is a Thursday night? Is that the earliest that we could do it?
You know, I still have to.
I, I'm just curious, I, what's, what's the absolute earliest date that we could do the public hearing? Cause I wanna be able to give us enough time to sit down and look at stuff and make changes if we need to.
Well, I think that's where Tad was coming from, to give him time to make the changes and get it posted. He's looking at a week from today. And then you're looking at two weeks after that for the hearing.
And, and that brings us to May seventh.
That brings us to May seventh.
Which brings us to May seventh.
Yes.
Right.
Which means that if there's any changes made, that we're looking at May twenty-eighth before we can have a second hearing. Cause it's gonna be another two, it's gonna take them another week to go through the three, three day posting with the, with the, uh, cause he's gonna have to make the changes.
You wanted to, you wanted to, uh, post immediately, is what you said. You want me to do back to backs here, is what you're telling me.
Yes, we're gonna have to, we're not gonna have any time.
Well.
That's my, that's my concern, is, you know, we're not gonna have any time to do anything.
You're going out three weeks from the seventh.
But if we have it on the seventh, you're not gonna be able to get it posted until the twelfth?
Well, if I give, what I do is I, I just tell it to run it again on the, uh, yeah, run it again on the twelfth.
Which means.
Run it on the thirteenth.
Run it on the thirteenth, which means that we're looking at the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh to have a meeting.
Gives me one, two, three days to make whatever changes. You guys decide at the meeting that night. You have to make the decision that night, what changes you wanna do. See, that's the.
Yeah.
You have to, you would have to make those decisions that night. Because you can't wait for another week for you to mull it over. If you wanna make those changes, you have to make it right off the bat, cause there's no time.
Well, they allow us to be in the school that late.
You know? We'll have to work quick. You know, I, we'll worry about that. We'll drive out that bridge when we, when we come to it, let's put it that way.
It's time to hear or get off the pot, some complaint. Okay, so let's, let's finalize this.
Okay, what do we need to do to finalize this? Anything? No, we don't need a motion, do we?
Yeah, make a motion, you wanna go with the changes that you've recommended to me, uh, the direction you've given to me. What you want me to do is set a public hearing there for the seventh.
ASAP. Okay, I'll make a motion that all the changes we've made and the direction we give the town planner to have a public hearing on May seventh. Two thousand fifteen.
Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to take everything to a public hearing on May fifteenth. All those in favor?
Seven.
Seven.
Wow.
Page seven.
May seventh, I'm sorry, thank you. May seventh of two thousand fifteen.
Right, right.
All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, one opposed. Marty, were you in favor? I didn't see.
Yeah, I went along with it.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what about the second public hearing? How are you gonna address that?
I think we're gonna have to address that the night of the seventh, in terms of whether, whether or not we have a public hearing, because afterward, you guys are gonna have to decide whether or not anything gets changed.
And if it's nothing gonna get changed, then why have a second public hearing?
Absolutely correct, Marty. If nothing. Absolutely correct, Marty. If nothing gets changed, there's no reason to have a, a second public hearing. But if something gets changed, then you'll have to post it that night, so there's no reason to, to run into that field right now.
Oh, the only question, the only question that I have is on the eight ball question.
I'm gone.
Shit, I might be sick that night too.
You're gonna be here.
Yeah, you are. I, I have to be, I'm gonna be on a business trip in Wisconsin for two weeks.
That's a load of cheese.
Limburger, really smelly cheese. Okay. Dare I ask if there's anything in the planners report?
Another question, we're not having, we're not, are we having a meeting on the fourteenth? Or not?
Fourteenth of May.
That's the normal, that's the normal meeting night, so I would say yes.
Question.
Would that be too late, I'm sorry, that'd be too late to make any changes to get it in time? No, but the meeting is going, I mean, you have other.
We'll still have other, okay, okay.
You still have other.
So if we have changes that need to be made, they have to, you're saying that night?
Yes, the night of the public hearing. That's why I asked you if we could stay in school late.
And, and how, we have to set a timeline on the public.
Can't, can't set a timeline on a public hearing.
We can do that.
Sure you can. I don't know that you want to.
Yeah, but I mean, if you start, you might start getting repetitive questions, and that's the point you said, well, thank you, you've got it. But usually, you know.
You're gonna be here for the public hearing, right?
No, I'm gonna be in Wisconsin.
You planned that long ago.
No, I was hoping we'd have the public hearing next week.
Yeah.
So what are we waiting for?
Okay.
Nothing, okay. Any, did you have something?
Right, I have, I need some clarification on the DuBois FOIA request. Because I was looking, you know, we're supposed to submit any communications that we've had. I was looking through my emails, any emails that I have regarding that executive session were set at town hall. So are we supposed to, even though it's been duplicated and it's been received at town hall, are we supposed to send an individual copies of that?
No, anything that you've sent us, we've already copied. If you had any communications between yourselves, if there were any discussions.
Right, I would understand that, but anything that's gone to town hall, it's already there.
It's already there. Yeah, I've already copied all, any communications I got from you guys, including, I'll be there. I've already copied all that stuff, I printed all that stuff off.
Right, well, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Make sure we do that.
But if you did any notes or any communications between yourselves, or something that you didn't send to town hall by, by, by email, then yeah, you have to make a copy of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We should, we should add an item onto the agenda in the future for, for general discussion. So that we have something on the agenda that brings that up, because we've always got questions to ask the town planer.
Okay, well, under town, I won't add it.
Yeah, I just.
So you can lump it in with the planners.
We can lump it in with, what I think, I think having it, having it in there would be a good point, just so that nobody ever says.
Planner's report and general discussion.
Yeah, I'll just add that to it. General discussion.
And speaking of towners, planners' report?
Um, yeah, the, uh.
We have a meeting next week. Do we have anybody on it?
I mean, you've, you're gonna have a whole bunch of stuff coming, and I forgot to, to bring it downstairs, because there's two sorts of.
TU's on the agenda, right? Cut eliminated?
Yeah, I thought you said PU. TU is on the, I told them that, you know, I don't know if we'll have time, because if we didn't make progress tonight, we'd have to make progress next week. And, but TU is on the agenda, and.
Clarify PU.
TU. Cut eliminated, we have a, I have an application. And this is, this is actually a pre-application meeting. They're asking for dam removal on Goff's Brook.
Okay.
And I've asked for, for some, some data, and I don't have any real data, I've got letters, which is the same thing. But I've also contacted the Rumble Historic Society to see if that dam has any local significance. I've seen the dam, and it's not an architectural marvel. But, you know, the question is, is, are there any archaeological or any local historically significant aspects to this dam? And I have not received back, but they tell me they wanna participate in the, in the discussion of this. And I've talked to the chairman and some two members of the AHS about this, and they intend to participate. The interesting thing about this is, if they come up with anything significant, this thing could disagree. This is being done with federal funds, and federal funds are, are subject to EIS. I have not gotten, EIS being the environmental impact statement. The intent of this dam, I'll give them explanation, but the intent is to turn that portion of Goff's Brook into a saline or marine environment. So it'll be titled, it'll go from being freshwater to title. And the objective is to promote the migration of alvers or.
Elway.
Elway and sea lamprey.
Yeah, we want those.
Yeah, I made it, you know, having, having done my groundwork up in Great Lakes, I had some comments to make about introducing sea lamprey out there. He assured me that it wasn't the same thing, and I'm not kidding.
Lot of that.
Why, I know, it's just not on the area. So anyways, so there, there, we have dam, we have, um, Parker Woods.
Question for that, sir.
Yes.
You bringing up Parker Woods.
Yeah.
When are we gonna have another site lock? Because we can't turn on, do anything on Parker Wood until we have at least a site lock.
Can we, can we notify him that we'd like to go back next week to do the site lock?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll put him on the agenda, we've got that, we cleared the decks of AIM and Champions, so we really don't have any, you know, we don't have anything else. I had a couple others, I've been talking to a couple people who are looking at, or you know, the business in town, I think I told you about that, but they haven't really come back with anything yet. I've had a couple meetings with them. Other things, oh, yeah, I just, just because, I'm gonna beat Marty to the punch on this, by giving you a report on Cape Rundle. Cape Rundle, we had a drawdown meeting a week ago, two weeks ago, I think I reported on that.
Do you know what Cape Rundle is?
I'm sorry, Cape Rundle Resorts, that's the new name, or that's the marketing name, it's Cape Rundle Resorts, the quiet side of Kennebunkport. You guys should know it before you see this.
They have a blast to their doing.
The quiet side of Kennebunkport. Oh, thank you, no, you do have another thing, good lord, glad I brought this up. Thank you, Marty, for making me bring this up during the meeting, because it just reminded me that they are gonna be bringing in their concept plan for the.
Clubhouse?
Yeah, for the community center, I think, probably, yeah, you said, that's one. And the issue there is still gonna be the parking, because they're still bringing it in with no motor vehicle parking.
Okay, question for you, as I've asked before.
Yeah.
Okay, golf carts have a certain diameter.
Yeah.
And anything else? We went through, round and round on motorcycles.
Yeah.
What's the diameter for a golf cart for parking?
They, it's considerably smaller than the required parking spaces.
Is that the two seater or the four seater?
Doesn't matter, it's considerably smaller. And they're showing, they're not showing, let's put it this way, Marty, they're not showing me a standard parking space. They're not showing me a nine by eighteen parking space, they're showing me an abbreviated.
Well, I mean, they could come, I know they could make the.
But do we not need, but do we not need a description for it, because, because we couldn't turn around and do anything about parking or anything else unless you had the word description and for motorcycle parking or anything else?
That's right.
Well, that's what we can discuss.
And that's what you should be discussing. Ironically, it's the same engineer. So he'll be more than familiar. He will be, Marty, he's the same engineer, so you will, you will.
Well, can we drill him in? He, he knows.
He knows this issue. He knows this issue. Remember, this is, this is a marketing issue. This is something that, that when, if we look at the original plans, they had normal nine by eighteen parking spaces there. And although I really appreciate what they're doing, and I know you folks appreciate the idea of making it a golf cart community, which is great, we also know what happens in, on a really rainy day, even in August, or what happens when the, the storms coming off the ocean in the fall, or in winter, because remember, we're going to seven thirty four now.
That's right.
And I don't see a lot of folks being in their Bermuda shorts driving a golf cart down.
When it's snowy. So there are questions we can pose.
Good questions to ask. The other side of it is, they've been doing some, taking a lot of liberties with landscaping, and it's gonna be pretty damn impressive. They're gonna be having water features out front, some very nice landscaping, some creative blasting and material. It's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna be very impressive, and we're being very light fingered on, on reviews of what they're doing. The infrastructure's going very well, they're putting in very quickly. Joe's gonna be, is already starting to put in this sewer line down towards the, the road, because he is committed, committed to me. Oh, heck, I just remembered, I got a meeting with the engineers tomorrow morning. I hope Jack remembers. We're actually meeting with our engineers and members of, representatives of the, of the Sewer District, Kennebunk Sewer District tomorrow, to go over exactly what, how we're gonna to plot the design of this, and what are encouraged to be working with us on actually getting grant money to design the sewer line with our end. Yeah, we'll be talking to Mike Baldick and the other guys over at the Sewer District. And what our timing is and our funding, and how we can work together to make that happen. And Joe is pushing hard, because he has made a commitment to build the sewer from campground up to his place, which will open up a large section of Route One sewer, on his dime, not on the tip, not on anything else.
When are you gonna do the, the work on Route One, with having a bypass lane or?
Uh, probably not this year, because, you know, it's, it's a, it's a trigger mechanism based on how many, how many trips he's doing. I don't think he's going to get occupied enough to get that triggered. It's not, it's not an exact, it's based on the number of trips, and I'm not sure. I can't remember what the DOT permits on that, but he's very much aware of it, and they're very sensitive to it, and they, you know, they've got, remember that Bill Walsh, Troy's engineer, is DEP's engineer on the site. And he is doing all the, all the monitoring, and so when they receive, I think he's also doing work for DOT as well, so when they hit those triggers.
So he's different three ways.
Good for him.
Question is, what is, to refresh my memory, how many units is what they call Phase One?
Uh, I have to look it up.
But roughly, what I'm saying.
It's thirty something.
Huh?
It's thirty something on there, yeah.
By, by their projection of incoming, say, sales?
Yeah.
Okay. They may exceed that already. So that might have to trigger the.
Yep.
By their projection of incoming sales, are they still putting up models?
Yeah, they're gonna be putting up the models. They wanna keep, they're gonna have the sales off, what they're gonna do is have one sales office, one model. They're gonna be on, temporarily on holding tanks until they get the sewer line, you know, the sewer field, first level of the sewer field in. And they, and they're, actually, I think they're being a little surprised, I think they have to, they ordered more pipe, perforated pipe the other day, because they, at the pace of sales or pre-sales, it looks like they're gonna have to expand more of the sewer, sewer field, or the septic field than they originally thought, so. But they've already done all the engineering and the designing and the dosing. And it's going very well, it really is, and, and I think you, you folks have seen how much, how much activity is up there. It is like creating a moonscape. They are blasting everything in the world.
To hear, to hear rains this spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Although I don't think that's gonna slow down Brown's equipment too much.
Besides, he needs that material, because he's doing, he's doing the Route One through, through Agunkwa job, and that's, he's gonna need that material.
I know somebody that works for him, he's hired a hundred or a hundred and fifty new people between, between this and the, and the Agunkwa job, he can't keep up with himself.
That Agunkwa job's probably the biggest job they've ever done.
Yeah, but more power.
They have two months to do it.
So.
Until they shut down, because.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Based on all of the letters and the freedom of information requests, we need to schedule a hearing, or not a hearing, we, we need that, whatever they're called. We need to have the, the DuBoys come in so that we can address whether or not their application is complete. So that we can, so that we can follow the proper procedures and, and the way that we're supposed to do things. So when can we get that scheduled?
Whenever you would like to schedule it.
Is that a decision that's been made, that their application's being accepted?
No, no, the, the decision that needs to get made is, is whether or not that application is complete. They need to come in so that we can tell them that the application is incomplete, because.
Or until it has expired.
It, it has, but they, they submitted an application for renewal, that my understanding is that the application is incomplete. They're not willing to accept the town planner saying that it is incomplete. They want the planning board itself to say to them, this application is, is incomplete. Let's give them due process, let's have them come in, let's explain to them, this is the, this is what we have set up in the code, this is the way we want it to be done. If it's, if it's an incomplete application, let's tell them that it's incomplete and tell them where it's lacking.
Just, just as a point of order, though, doesn't the applicant have to request that?
Right.
He has requested that by submitting an application.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
And how long ago was that submitted?
He submitted an application, let's put it on the agenda, and, and if it's an incomplete application, then we'll tell them it's incomplete. If it's complete, we'll move on to the next step, but we need to do something.
Well, no, in clarification, I mean, for the board members who did not see it, I did send out a letter on April sixth, dated April sixth, that said, you're, based on the ordinance, your application is incomplete. You do the following things, give us additional copies of the actual application, give us the copies of the, the, uh, of the DEP permit, but not copies of the application for you all to have. And also, the, the way the ordinance is written also, it should be accompanied by a copy of the CEO's assessment, evaluation, whether or not they are in compliance with the, or, or, or land use ordinance, and in compliance with the conditions of the two thousand eleven permit. Now, Jim, now that the snow's gone, Jim actually can go out and take a look, but he cannot go on that site without their permission to go on that site. Just, you know. It's not like a building permit, he has to ask for permission to go out there, and, and originally, as you recall, they had denied him that permission on that. So he was waiting for them to ask him to come out there, because that's actually the way it says it. I mean, he could demand that to go out there. But the, the fact is, the way it's written, the application isn't complete until we have also the co enforcement officers.
Review.
Right, but I, wasn't one of the issues that the, the, the use, because it was a conditional use, that it had expired because it hadn't been renewed, or was there a pending submission that?
There was not a pending submission.
No, so I thought the use had expired and therefore it cannot be renewed.
That's an issue that the board has discussed, I think, or county attorneys discussed it, has, has looked at that, but that's a decision of the board.
Right, but that's not, that's not whether an application is complete, that's a whole different issue, right?
Well, they submitted, submitted an application, they insist that we, that we review that application.
Right.
And, and the application is for a renewal, so we need to look at it and, and determine whether or not it's appropriate, whether or not it's complete, what they need to do next. We need to give them direction.
Completion so much as if the use has expired, it doesn't matter, it's expired. Am I right on that? I mean, you can't renew a conditional use that's expired.
We need, we need to discuss that.
We need to have that here with them so that we can discuss it.
I understand that, but I think that's the issue that we need to discuss.
But we need to have them here to discuss it. I don't think it's appropriate for us to discuss it without them here.
I understand that, yeah. No, I'm just trying to clarify what, what we're working on.
All of the above.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, uh, the next, the next possible, uh, when would the next possible point be that you could have them in here, do you know?
Oh, well, let's see.
Would it be the twenty-third or the fourteenth? Cause next week is the twenty, the twenty-third is next week, and that's a regular meeting.
Right.
That's the fourth Thursday of the month.
You could do it then, or you could do it the fourteenth. It's up to you. Or you can have a special meeting the thirtieth.
Well, let's just do it as soon as we can.
If we, if we can have them come in next week, let's do it next week. Get, get them on the agenda.
So, we're not acting as postponed.
That's right.
And remind them at the same time that they need to have Jim to do the inspection, right?
Um, well, I, I wouldn't say that.
Because without that, what's the point?
Well, I, I, well, I'll, I'll report. I have reminded them that they need to do that. That letter does in fact say that you need to have this to meet where it'd be a complete application.
All right, but it doesn't have to remind.
I will notify them in writing tomorrow that they're on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anything else we need to deal with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, echo, wait a minute.
Echo.
Anything more on, uh, Blue Moon?
No. They're in the process of doing renovations, but.
We don't know what's covered.
Um, it's my understanding that, um, they're still evaluating what their business program is, but this is all secondhand, Marty.
I'm just, I'm just, I, I've stopped down there myself to go see, to be nosy, and every time I've been there, cars were parked around and there was nobody there. So, I mean, just for point of clarification.
Yeah, I, the, the, the thing is that there's nothing they're doing there that requires my review or the planning board's review.
I'm just, just, like I said, I just stopped there to be nosy to see what's.
I, I, so I can't really tell you. Uh, I'll ask Jim to, next time, see if he can give you a report on that, uh, because he's the only one that's been going in. I, I know, so I can't give a report on that.
Anything farther down in the BI district, pending, uh, possibly a new business?
Yes, I have not, I've, I've already had two discussions with them. We've sat down, we've gone over it, but, uh, they're, I think they've closed the little in. I'm not sure. You know, there's like a three-month lag on, on the real estate report coming in, but, um, uh, but I haven't seen them. You know what they have to do. We've had a good discussion. I've given them the applications, and they, they know exactly what they wanna do, and, uh, so they'll, when they're ready, they'll, they'll come in. I don't know who they have for an engineer, um, but they have a good, good business plan. But nothing else on that? Oh, incidentally, just to bring that up, I, we have a staff review committee meeting and public hearing tomorrow morning at nine o'clock at Emlock Grove Campground to go over the, uh, public use of, uh, public filling station.
Nice installation. I drove by.
It's one of the nicest around, actually, yeah. But, uh, so we're gonna be looking down, taking the, taking the fire department, and, and Jim will not be there, but other folks and I will be going in. Jim already knows the facility, because he's, he gave the permit for it in the first place. Told me he has some issues.
Southern Marine?
Yeah, I've talked to Paul. Southern Marine? Uh, he's, um, he's working on some other business plans right now.
Did they pour a foundation for the new building?
Don't know.
It appeared as I drove by today, it looked like they had done something off there.
I don't think they pulled a permit for it yet, though.
For the new one?
No, for the, you mean the second one.
The one to the north.
Front.
Of where the.
In the parking lot.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll have to go, I'll ask Jim. He's in tomorrow. I have to make some money. I have not been out there since they pretty much finished up with their second.
Is there anything else?
Classic complacency rule over.
Oh, yeah.
He's got a nice car today.
I'm gonna buy a few things for you.
I don't want to buy anything, I just wanna stop in here and look at it.
Yeah, right.
Okay, need, a motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? We're outta here.
Marty, do you know how to shut the camera?
No.
Nope.
I do. The biggest problem is getting the guy out of the office, so I could ask him for cameras. Why do you have to be on his control?
Um, John, there's something very strange going on.